Meeting to order for Monday, November 23. I'm going to read a little bit of the agenda notification just so it's clear how we do these meetings now. So this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 2820, which is related to COVID-19 virus. So the order suspends a number of the Brown Act regulations. And with that being said, we have a couple of commissioners who have the -- are going to be participating via the Zoom, which has been set up. The City Council chambers are not open to the public. And like I said, the planning commissioners have the option to participate via Zoom. That being said, if we could have the city planner call the call to order. The -- excuse me. Let's do the pledge of allegiance first. I'm sorry, I'm out of order. Commissioner Busk, would you lead us, please?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now we're ready for the roll call. City Planner?
Chairperson Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Bauma.
Here.
Commissioner Busk.
Here. Are mics on or off?
If you press the upper corner, I believe it should turn green.
Test.
Mine's green.
Mine's.
I want to put you in place of the disc. It's okay. Long as we quiet. All right.
So we'll try it again. Commissioner Busk?
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
And Commissioner Crayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Crayhill is here by Zoom. And Commissioner Goodkind?
Present.
And Commissioner Goodkind is also here by Zoom. So you have your full commission present, five in the chambers and two participating via Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is any communications on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any slips from any participants in the audience or, excuse me, from the public that wanted to?
Mr. Chairman, no, we don't.
We do not. Thank you. Next item then would be approval of minutes from the last meeting, which would have been October 26 of this year. Unless there's any dissent on those minutes or if anybody wants to recuse, I'll assume they're okay with the minutes. Hearing no nays, we'll approve those minutes as they stand. Consent calendar, we have nothing agendized for this evening nor transportation items. So we'll move into our public hearing portion of the agenda. Presentation by city staff and then by the applicant if the applicant is available tonight. Our first item is item four, which is consideration of a regular coastal permit to construct a 222-square-foot deck with an 88-square-foot exterior stairs, 222-square-foot second-level balcony and exterior remodeling. This is all taking place at 1725 South Pacific Street. The applicant is Karen Murphy. Disclosures by commissioners. I'll start on my right. Commissioner Morrissey?
Read the report.
Vice Chair Bauma?
Read the staff report and did a site visit.
Commissioner Busk?
Staff report and site visit as well.
Commissioner Custer?
I read the report.
Commissioner Crayhill?
I have nothing to disclose.
And Commissioner Goodkind?
Staff report and site visit. Thank you.
And those are my disclosures, two staff report and a site visit. Okay. Veronica, the show is yours. Go ahead and start your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Chairperson Rosales, planning commissioners. My name is Veronica Maronis, planning consultant, and I'll be presenting item number four this evening. The proposed project is a 5,418-square-foot beachfront lot located at 1725 South Pacific Street within the South Oceanside neighborhood planning area. The site's land use designation is low-density residential and zoning is single-family residential. The project site is located within the appealable area of the coastal zone. Surrounding land uses include single-family residential to the north and south, multifamily to the east, and Pacific Ocean to the west. The applicant requests to construct a 222-square-foot first-level deck with 88-square-foot staircase and a 222-square-foot second-level balcony on the west-facing facade of an existing single-family residence. Exterior remodeling of the residence, including wood-like hardy paneling, smooth stucco, and window-to-door changeouts, is also proposed. A regular coastal permit is required for the proposed project because it is located within the appealable area of the coastal zone. Since the project site is located within the appealable area, final action by the Coastal Commission will be required subsequent to Planning Commission's decision. The existing residence is subject to an open code enforcement case for unpermitted construction. Abatement of the open case begins with this coastal permit request. The existing site layout is shown here with the footprint of the existing patio shown in yellow and coastal string line setback in blue. There are existing improvements past string line, however, they are not a part of the proposed project. This slide shows the proposed deck and balcony footprint in yellow and coastal string line in blue. Here is the proposed first-story level deck, which will allow for deck access from the rear of the residence where currently there is none. This deck level would be within eight inches of the rear string line setback. The second-level balcony would be stepped back from the string line setback by approximately four and a half feet, creating a terrace effect from the north and south perspective. Here are the proposed northern and southern elevations. New paneling and stucco would bring the existing residence design to a contemporary aesthetic typical of residences in the surrounding neighborhood. The residence would retain its single-story massing at the Pacific Street frontage but include updated exterior materials. In order to provide access to the first-level deck, the deck height would be increased to allow for its finished floor to connect with that of the residence. The area beneath the built-up deck would include a crawl space for storage, as shown on the west facade. The proposed project meets the required development standards for the R1 zone. No improvements are proposed as a part of this project past setbacks, including the required string line. The proposed areas of deck and balcony do not exceed the maximum height for the R1 The proposed project is consistent with the local coastal program. The proposed project would not result in impacts to public beach access or on-street parking. The proposed deck and balcony stepped back from the string line setback, and the exterior remodeling would improve the overall aesthetic of the residence, consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Whoops. It should be noted that staff received no public comment for this project. So with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirm the issuance of a Class III categorical exemption under CEQA and adopt the resolution approving the regular coastal permit. And with that, staff's available for questions, and the applicant and property owner should be joining us via Zoom.
Thank you, Veronica. Any questions for staff? Commissioners? Go ahead. Commissioner Busk?
Could you tell us what the code enforcement action is about, all about?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last bit of that?
I'm sorry. You said there was a code enforcement infraction being pursued on the property. Can you tell us what that's all about?
Yes. So the project has a code enforcement case currently open for unpermitted construction of this deck and balcony. So they were cited and submitted for a building permit upon which they were notified they actually needed a coastal permit since they are within the appealable area of the coastal zone, and that's what this request is for.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners Crayhill or Goodkind, any questions for staff?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And you said the applicant was going to do a presentation or just available for questions?
They're just available for questions.
Okay. Any questions by any commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Crayhill or Goodkind, any other questions for this time for the applicant or are you okay?
No, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any public input, any speaker slips? City Planner, Scott?
We didn't receive any speaker slips, no.
Okay. Great.
We do have the applicant on the line. I wasn't sure if he wanted to make himself known.
Yes, hi, I'm the architect on the project.
Can you give us your name, sir?
Yeah, my name is Sean Canning.
Thank you. Okay. No questions from the commissioners or any questions for the staff or the applicant. So I guess we'll entertain a motion unless somebody wants to debate this any further. Vice Chair Bauma?
I'll go ahead and take a stab at the motion. It's good to see the applicant clean up his act, I guess you could say, and improving the area. So that's nice. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Applicant. I'd like to confirm the issuance of a Class III category exemption for the new construction or conversion of small structures pursuant to Section 15303E of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and approve the regular coastal permit, RC 200005, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020P33.
Second. And I would just like to add that I'm really happy, since this is the second case on Pacific Street that we've had that didn't have a big problem.
Yeah.
So two times in, what, six years?
That's good.
Good deal.
Good deal. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. I'm going to do roll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Goodkind.
Yes, I vote for the motion. I mean, yes, yes vote. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Crayhill?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes.
Commissioner Busk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bauma?
Yes.
And Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
And I too will register a yes vote on that motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, we will record that vote as seven in favor, zero against, and the motion passes.
Thank you, City Planner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item five. Consideration of a development plan and regular coastal permit to allow construction of a 5,000-square-foot, two-story, three-unit apartment building located at 1417 Lemon Street. The applicant is Stephen Bollerman. I'll ask for disclosures, going first to the commissioners on Zoom. Commissioner Goodkind?
Hi, thank you. Yes, site visit and staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Crayhill?
Yeah, I'm going to actually recuse myself from this one. I have a property about 1,000 feet from this, so it's a little too close for comfort.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
I read the staff report.
Commissioner Busk?
Site visit and staff report.
Vice Chair Bauma?
I also had a site visit and staff report.
Commissioner Morrissey?
The site -- the staff report, sorry.
And my disclosures, I did a site visit today and I read the staff report. Looks like, Veronica, this item is yours as well, so go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, my name's Veronica Maronis, planning consultant, presenting item number five to you this evening. So, situated within the East Side Capistrano planning area, the project site is a vacant 5,000-square-foot lot located on the south side of Lemon Street, east of Santa Barbara Street and west of San Diego Street. The site has a local coastal program land use designation of high density and a zoning designation of medium-density residential. Surrounding land uses include multifamily units to the south and west, a vacant lot to the north, and a single-family residence to the east. Access to the lot is provided via the alley located at the rear of the property. The applicant requests a development plan for the construction of a new three-unit residential building and a regular coastal permit because the site is located within the coastal zone. The 5,000-square-foot vacant lot measures 50 feet wide by 100 feet deep and was subdivided prior to 1958. The proposed project consists of three apartment units. The new structure would consist of 5,008 square feet distributed among the three units, covered parking stalls and garages. Unit one would be located on the ground floor and units two and three on the second floor. Units two and three would also include second-level decks facing Lemon Street. The proposed site plan shows an open front yard setback to Lemon Street. All vehicle access would be taken from the rear -- excuse me -- and all on-street parking would be retained on Lemon Street. Unit one would be located on the ground floor with primary entry facing Lemon Street and a secondary entry via the unit's garage base, shown in red. Units two and three would be located on the second floor with primary entrances located on the east and west sides of the building, as well as access via their garage spaces. Six parking spaces laid out in tandem would include three garage spaces and three covered spaces adjacent to the alley. Unit two and three floor plans are shown here with deck space provided on the Lemon Street facade. Each unit would include two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a flexible den office space. The proposed elevation shown here includes smooth stucco finishing with wood trelle design features and proposed second-level deck. Parking stalls would be opened with garage doors setback beyond the covered stalls. Here are the side elevations, which show the relief from the covered parking area and second-level deck and trelle features over the entries to units two and three. The proposed project meets the required development standards of the R3 zone and provides three additional parking spaces than required. The proposed project is consistent with the local coastal program in that no impacts to on-street parking, public use, or beach access would occur. The proposed structure is consistent with other two-story development in the general vicinity and is below the maximum height for the zone. The project is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance for high-density land use designations and medium-density residential zoning. It should be noted that staff received one public comment after the posting and noticing for the public hearing with concerns regarding the allotted timeframe for public notice. The project abided by all noticing requirements outlined in the city's enhanced notification, City Council Policy 300-14. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission by motion confirm issuance of the Class III categorical exemption and approve the project by adopting the draft resolution. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant should be on the line.
Thank you, Veronica, for that presentation. Any questions for staff, by anybody? Commissioner Busk?
I know, it's just a thorn. I noticed this project is calling for grass in the front yards. Do we have any kind of policy at the planning level to encourage less water-intensive landscaping? Or do we just say, whatever you want, you can put in? This seems to be an area that, like a succulent front yard with gravel or some other less water-intense use would be applicable.
We do have a water-efficiency landscape ordinance, and I believe the project was reviewed by the city's landscape architect. It would be subject to a landscape, conceptual landscape plan when it goes into final engineering, and it would have to comply with those requirements.
Okay. And then I just have just a couple of points. On page nine of the ordinance, bullet points 11 and 15 both deal with rodent proofing. Those are duplicates.
I'm sorry, I heard rodent proofing. Could you repeat the last portion?
11 and number 15. They appear to be duplicates.
They are.
We can strike one of those conditions for the redundancy.
And then on page 13, payment evaluation for onsite. I believe that should be pavement, not payment. I'm not sure why we would be paying. And the same thing for the next bullet point on number 36.
That would be an engineering condition, and I'm...
I think they do pavement, not payment.
Yeah, the header.
The header should be pavement on both of those, I believe.
Yeah, it's pavement throughout 35 and 36.
I'm beginning to think you guys put these in here just to make sure I read them.
So it's a bolded header on those two, then, yeah.
Definitely make sure we address that and change that.
If you would. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Crayhill has recused himself, so Commissioner Goodkind, any questions for staff?
Not at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The applicant is on the line. If you could introduce yourself, I don't know if we have any questions, but applicant, would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, good evening, City Council. Stephen Bollerman, builder, owner of the property.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Sir, I'm sorry, do you have a presentation, Mr. Bollerman?
No, we're -- what you see, what the city planner there referenced was essentially our presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll ask any commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant. See none. Commissioner Goodkind, any questions for the applicant?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. We have no questions. It seems like a pretty straightforward development project, so I'll entertain a motion if somebody would choose to.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry. Can you hold that opportunity for the motion? I haven't gone to the public just yet.
Oops.
I did hear planning staff did get one, not a speaker slip, but some input from the public. Do we have a speaker slip for anybody participating tonight from the public?
I don't see anybody. I see a phone number here. We can ask to unmute. I'm not sure if that's for the other item.
Go ahead and ask if you want to see if they're interested in this item or want to speak to this.
Sure. Last four digits are 4841. Are you looking to speak on this item? I don't hear anything, so I think we can move on.
We'll ask one more time. Someone on the Zoom call with the last digits 4841, would you like to speak on this item, item five, or are you holding for another item? If you could unmute yourself and tell us either way.
That's my phone number, and I'm calling in regarding item six.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Commissioner Goodkind offered to make a motion. Go ahead.
I will. I want to thank the applicant for bringing us a project that adds housing in a much-needed area of the city, so thank you for that, applicant. And I want to make a motion that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per CEQA Guidelines, Article 19, Section 15303B, and approve Development Plan D1900019 and regular coastal permit, RC 1900015, by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020P34 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We have a second for Commissioner Custer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, vote again. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Busk?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bauma?
Yes.
Commissioner Crayhill has recused himself from that, and so I'll turn to Commissioner Goodkind. You made the motion. Is that a yes?
That's a yes from me. Thank you.
Thank you, and I too am registering a yes on this item and the motion.
Mr. Chairman, we'll record that as six in favor and one recusal, so the motion passes.
Great. Thank you. Good luck, applicant, with your project. It's a good one.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
We'll go to item six then. Item six is consideration of a tentative map development plan, conditional use permit and regular coastal permit, this time to allow development of a 20-residential condominium unit on about a half an acre located at 1011 South Tremont Street. Applicant is Elite Fashion and Import LLC. Commissioner Goodkind, disclosures?
Muted there. Commissioner Goodkind?
I apologize. Staff report, site visit, and an email, one email from the public, I believe.
Thank you. Commissioner Crayhill?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Custer?
Staff report and site visit.
Commissioner Busk?
Staff report, site visit, one email from the public. And this particular property is literally across the street from where I would normally recuse myself, so it's very close to that line in my neighborhood. But I can't imagine it would have any financial impact on my property, so I won't recuse myself unless one of my fellow commissioners would like me to do that.
And I think the test on that is financial interest or possible financial interest. Is there any other reason why Commissioner Busk would need to recuse himself?
You're well outside of 500.
It's actually about 800 feet.
Yeah, you're...
Okay. So he's -- Commissioner Busk will not be recusing himself. Vice Chair Bauma?
I did a site visit. I got the staff report, and I did receive an email.
And Commissioner Morrissey?
Read the staff report and received the email.
Thank you. My disclosures, I did a drive-by. I got the one email that all of us also got, and I read the staff report. This item is going to -- presentation is going to be by Scott Nightengale. Go ahead, Scott.
Good evening, commissioners, members of the public. I'm Scott Nightengale, here to present Agenda Item Number Six for the consideration of a tentative map development plan, conditional use permit and regular coastal permit to allow the development of a 20-unit residential condominium located at 1011 South Tremont Here's an image of the site. Like I said, it's located at 1011 South Tremont Street, just four lots to the southwest of the intersection of West Street and South Tremont. It's located within the non-appelable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The site is currently vacant and was previously utilized as the LaPlaya Trailer Park since the 1950s, which had and housed 19 trailers, which were vacated and removed from the site back in 2017, which is discussed more in the staff report. The site does hold a zoning designation of R3, medium-density residential, and is surrounded by a mixture of other single-family homes, mobile homes to the south, an eclectic mix of multifamily and single-family and duplexes to the east, and some newer condominiums and row homes to the north and west. The site is located approximately a quarter-mile to the north from the Oceanside Sprinter Station and about a half-mile from the Oceanside Transit Center. So what we see here today, this project, a request for confirming issuance of categorical exemption for CEQA Guidelines, Article 19, for infill development. We're asking to approve the tentative map, the regular coastal permit, and the development plan. And the use permit actually, per Article 34, requires that the use permit be reviewed by Planning Commission and recommended to the City Council. So we're asking for a recommendation of the CUP to council. You guys might have received that email asking about the applicant's change in name. They did change the ownership information, and that was filed with the Secretary of State. And this is the new ownership, Oceanside Vista Village Incorporated, and that is now on the resolution. And we are also updating the resolution to change Condition 76 to read as follows, so the text in the red will be the new information on 76. And this is just to clarify, the CUP will be seen in front of the City Council and is recommended from you to the council. So this is how it will read. This tentative map, development plan, and regular coastal permit. Approval is subject to the City Council approval of a use permit and shall expire three years from final approval. and shall expire three years from final approval date by City Council. You know what? We're probably going to have to revise that section. It should say final approval date unless this time period is extended by this previous section 408, 409 of the subdivision ordinance and provisions of the zoning ordinance. So we'll make a minor edit. It shouldn't change the signature page, but we'll be implementing that. So the request in front of us tonight is for a tentative subdivision map. This will create the one-lot subdivision for a 20-unit airspace condominium development pursuant to the Oceanside subdivision ordinance. The development plan will actually develop the 20-unit development building, condominium building, as one large 47,394-square-foot condo building comprised of 20 attached townhome-type condominiums, which will have their own private two-car tandem garages, which will be located and accessed by the rear elevation that come from the alley. The conditional use permit is to allow the conversion of a closed and vacated trailer park to allow the 20-unit multifamily condominium development pursuant to Article 34 of the zoning ordinance, and also a regular coastal permit based on the project's location within the non-applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. Here's an image of the site. Like I said, it's currently vacant. They did receive a demolition permit due to the site being in disrepair. There were several code enforcement and police citations that were issued here. Unfortunately, they had to remove the vacated units, and so as of right now, it's sitting vacant. Historical report was submitted and prepared by Kristi Hawthorne, discussing that the site and the previous LaPlaya Trailer Park does not hold any historical significance and is warrant for development. So the site has been sitting vacant since 2017, June of 2017, when they received their demo permit to remove the remaining trailers. And there was also an outbuilding, which they used for a laundry room and for an office. So that was actually the actual structure that was demoed and removed. And here's one last photo of it. So here's an image of the surrounding area. We have a four-unit, single-family row home development just located directly to the north. And directly to the east, you have unfortunately some, it looks like, vacated residential. You do have some multifamily apartments located east and to the south, and another mobile home complex, which is directly adjacent to the south of the site. And directly to the west, we have some newer condominium developments and some older multifamily developments. So this project would be in like-kind with what you see in the neighborhood. It's right in the density range of what we allow in the R3 zone. The tentative map will create the 20-unit airspace condos, as well as established common open space areas managed by the HOA. The site has received, will receive, a dramatic facelift just by allowing this development. As of right now, there's no curb, gutter, sidewalk. They'll be implementing that as part of the project. They have some larger setback areas than what are typically proposed. They have some 20-foot front yard setbacks. The setback in this area is about 15 feet, and they're filling that with landscaping. They're creating a city parkway with city street trees. So this will dramatically change the frontage of this site and the neighborhood as well. Here's an image of the proposed landscaping. Double street trees, low-line ground cover. They're in compliance with our city landscape manual and also our stormwater management practices. And they also have some landscaping on the rear portions dividing the properties in the alley. Here's an image of the floor plan. This project will be a three-story development with maximum height ranging to the rooftop at about 28 to 29 feet. The railing will go up to 35 feet, and this railing is transparent. We worked with the applicant to try to bring this project down so we could limit the vertical massing. We took, we worked with them on removing some of the rooftop structures, so the project will just daylight to the roof. Those are some of the elements that we've incorporated. Like I said, here's the first-level access garage. It's a tandem configuration, accessed by the way of the alley. First-level floor plan, typically, majority of the units are either kitchen, living area, and some of the larger units do provide bedrooms. The second levels are primarily kitchens and more additional living area, and the third and last levels will primarily be living space. And here's the image of the roof deck areas, which will consider, will be their proposed private open space, which will consist of 248 square feet, ranging from 248 to 434. And like I said, they won't have any actual rooftop structures exceeding the 35 feet, so they're limiting their actual vertical massing. The majority of the units range from 1,800 to 2,000 square feet. Actually, there's two units, Unit 1 and 20, that are the larger of the 20 units, and those will be 2,364 square feet with two bedrooms, a den, and 3.5 bathrooms. Primarily, the other units are all at 1,831, and they range from two bedrooms and some with three baths and 2.5. They all meet the private open space requirement. They have their own private open space decks as well as balconies, and they all provide a larger-than-normal two-car garage. The requirement is only 400 square feet. Some of these tandem garages are at 500-plus. Here's an image of the proposed architecture. The architecture is a contemporary design. Like I said earlier, they carefully designed this building to ensure the massing is not an impact by eliminating roof structures and vertical massing reductions, also providing articulations and facade pop-outs and differences in colors and materials to reduce the facade massing. And also, this provides an attractive design that complements not only the neighborhood, but the site. Here's some renderings of what the project would look like. Before they even submitted this project, we worked with the applicant. They came on a developer conference, and we worked with them for almost a year to get this design. There were several different additions until we got to this point. So that's pretty happy with the proposed design. It feels that it could complement the neighborhood as well as the site. With that, staff reviewed the project based on the following. General Plan land use compliance. It achieves a balance of residential land uses. It adds to the eclectic nature in the area. It's primarily multifamily with some single-family. It provides a good transition between the high density and single-family. The proposed residential use and number of units is compatible and appropriate for the area and the location. They're actually adding one additional use or unit to the site. They had 19 trailers. This will have 20, 20 multifamily condos. And as conditioned, the project meets the required findings for development. Not only does the project comply with development standards for density, bulk, scale, subdivision, but it also complies with Article 34 for the mobile home removal through the use permit. The findings are described in the staff report, and they show compliance with Article 34 for conversions of mobile home to other uses. The submitted closure impact report adequately describes that tenants were voluntarily vacated from the site since January, I'm sorry, June of 2017. Thus, there has been adequate years before even submitting this use permit. So they meet the requirements on submitting the use permit and also meeting the findings as well. And lastly, the project meets the local coastal program. There's no public coastal access. It's by far about 800 feet plus from the coast. No public coastal view impacts on the public view corridor, and no public parking impact. And like I said earlier, they will be adding additional on-street parking by providing the new curb and gutters. So we'll be getting, we will obtain some new parking west of Coast Highway, which will be nice. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, affirm issuance of categorical exemption, approve the tentative map, development plan, and regular coastal permit, and recommend that the City Council approve the LaPlaya Trailer Park closure impact report by conditional use permit by adopting the resolution. This concludes my presentation. I would also note that we did receive, I would say, about three phone calls in opposition to the project, and you, like you saw earlier, two emails. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you for speaking to the design of the project. That was one of my questions, and I see you have a slide up here. Appreciate that. And it sounds like staff worked with the applicant for a while to come up with this design. Question for you regarding the property that would be just south of that, the other mobile home park. Is that, do we know, is that a different owner? Would we expect a similar kind of development down the road, or do you know anything about that?
Commissioner Rosales, yes, it's a different owner. They'd have to go through the same process, the use permit for the closure impact report, and meet Article 34 for findings for changing of the use. So yeah, they'd have to go through the same exact process, and it's not the same owner.
Yeah. Do we know what prompted this change? Because it was a mobile home park in that property before. What triggers that? Is that a decision by the property owner to redevelop it, or are there other circumstances? I'm just kind of curious. I don't know that process very well.
It's the same thing with development. It's the process of if the developer wishes to develop it, you know, it just goes through the process, so...
It's not a more protected type of development, mobile home parks, than any other development or standard?
I don't believe so. We can confirm with the city attorney.
Okay, just curious. Barbara?
Article 34 is there in order to protect the, any existing residence of a mobile home park that the owner wants to convert the use of to a different use? That's why we have Article 34, and it's consistent with state law that is designed to protect the current residents of the mobile home park that's going to be, that's proposed to be converted. And in this case, there are no residents. They had vacated the site a couple years prior to the application, so it's not really... The findings can be met, but they're pretty much not applicable because there are no residents to be, who are going to be displaced.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions for staff?
I do. I have.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Goodkind.
Thank you. Back to Article 34. Maybe I'm missing it, but does it specify this time period for, you know, lack of occupancy, I guess, for lack of a better word, or lack of the existence of the mobile homes to this period in time? It seems like that's being dismissed as an issue because there hasn't been a mobile, there haven't been mobile homes there for two years. I'm just wondering if there's a provision that elaborates on that timeframe. That's my first question. And my second question is about the Mellow Act's inclusionary housing requirements. If we could get some elaboration on that. Hello?
Thank you. The staff is consulting. Hang on a minute.
Thanks.
Commissioner Goodkind, this is Scott.
Hi, Scott. Thank you for the presentation.
So for the Mellow Act, I believe there is a time period that the site has to remain vacant, or the tenants have to be out of the units, and that is a one-year timeframe for the Mellow Act. I have to look into the time period for Article 34 and get back to you. I have it open right now, and I'll, if you can just give me some time here, I'll give you an answer for that one.
Commissioner Goodkind, can we come back to that one?
Well, just to clarify, yeah, sure. But the report says that the project is subject to the Mellow Act's inclusionary housing requirements, and I'm just wondering what the project is doing to comply with that.
Commissioner Goodkind, if you don't mind, I can take that. The Mellow Act has replacement housing requirements and inclusionary housing requirements in it. The inclusionary housing requirements are that it just, it requires, where feasible, that the project contain, I believe, I think it's 10%. Actually, I don't think it says a percentage. But there is an inclusionary requirement in the Mellow Act that can be satisfied if there is a, by complying with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance that applies citywide. So, and that's an in-loo fee. It's either 10%. You build, 10% of the units are affordable in the project, or you can pay an in-loo fee.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
Did that answer both your questions, Commissioner Goodkind?
It did not answer the first question. You know, I'm looking at the email letter that we got from Ms. Walshaw, and her item number four in that letter is what I was looking at. And that is, she says that the park owners failed to comply with the city's zoning conversion ordinance, denying the City Planning Commission and the City Council the required opportunity to make the determinations required by the zoning conversion, Article 34. So, and it looks like in the report, in the staff report, that staff have decided that's not an issue because there hasn't, haven't been mobile homes there for two years, and I'm wondering if that timeframe is somewhere in the ordinance or the article. Sorry.
Yeah. Commissioner Goodkind, I can answer that. For Article 3404, there's a relocation plan requirement that there needs to be more than 12 months has passed, or otherwise they're going to have to have relocation assistance plan for low-income to moderate-income residents. And I believe it's also in conjunction with the Mellow Act as well. Am I correct?
There is a 12-month requirement, Commissioner Goodkind, for, in Article 34, basically for notice to any existing residents. But again, because there weren't any existing residents to give notice to within that 12-month period, that it has been satisfied or...
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Bauma, go ahead.
My question was regarding the roof plan. It looks like on the roof plan, there's quite, a lot of amenities up there. Like it shows, like there's like barbecues and even a sink. Is that just kind of like, is that really going to happen, or is that just something that was just drawn? Because you were making it sound like you were minimizing the roof. But it looks like the roof is actually pretty activated with what they're doing up there, which I'm not like opposed. I'm just saying, is that what it is, or... I think in your report, you kind of made it sound like it was just, you know, the railings were very minimal. There isn't any really, I don't think there's any walls. I think that, even though it looks like it could be a wall, I think that's just probably just the railing that's drawn to look like a wall. It was on page A004 is what I'm looking at.
Sure.
And thanks, Scott, for your presentation. That was a good presentation, as always.
They do show the, there is barbecues and some type of sinks up there, and they're primarily in the middle of the roof. They don't have any of those that are towards the exterior portions of the roof.
Right.
So we felt that they were okay. They're still under the 35 feet, which is allowed. So the plan is, yeah, it is what it is.
I just wondered, because you made it sound like it was nothing, and then I look at this one going, God, it's like a full-on living room up there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could elaborate a little bit. Recently, the city has gone through discussions about height exceptions, and the directive, and we did update the zoning ordinance, was to minimize those exceptions to the maximum height. And so if there's something going above... And so if there's something going above the maximum height, we work with the applicant to make it very, as small as possible. We wouldn't allow a barbecue to exceed the height maximum. In this case, the barbecue is below the maximum. So as long as they're below the maximum, we don't regulate barbecues and that kind of things.
So the trigger is more the height issue than the amenities on the roof in this case, or in all cases, maybe?
I'm sorry. Say that again?
So the trigger is more so the height issue as opposed to the amenities on the roof?
Yeah. And if it exceeds the height, so there is that exception to exceed a height, and we revised the code, and we've been diligent about enforcing it. The only things that are allowed to exceed the height now are elevator shafts, or staircases, or ornamental architecture. We wouldn't allow a barbecue to exceed the height limit.
That makes sense. Commissioner Busk?
Just, Scott, one clarification. On equipping these buildings for solar, solar power, when I read the report, basically it told me that they don't need to put solar, anything to do with solar in at all at this point. All they need to do by state law is to maintain an empty spot on the roof to potentially put solar in in the future. Is that true? No piping, no conduiting, nothing to do with solar other than an empty spot on the roof?
I don't believe that's true. Because even these single-family homes require solar. If anything, it has to be solar-ready. I can confirm that and get back to you.
Okay. Listen, I'll see if I can find the wording and then...
Certainly. Commissioner Crayle, I haven't called on you. Do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, just, as we overload Scott there. Is staff aware of if there were ever any spaces in this property that were subject to our rent stabilization ordinance?
Boy, we're really throwing them at you this evening, Scott. Sorry.
I can respond to that, Commissioner Crayle. Yes, this park was subject to the, the rent control ordinance for mobile home parks, and it was subject to the jurisdiction of the mobile home park, the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission. The last, I believe the last approved rent schedule, they had only one of the spaces was actually regulated because all of the other spaces that were at the park were owned, the mobile homes were owned by the park owner. So only one of the spaces was one where the park owner owned the land and the resident owned the unit. And those are, that's the kind that's, that's subject to the ordinance.
And approximately, what was the date when that last one was subject there on that rent schedule?
I think the last, the last one was, it was actually quite some time ago that they, that they had, the rent schedule that was approved was from, I believe, 2007, maybe.
Thank you very much. No other questions.
Thank you. How about the commissioners in the chambers? Any questions for staff? No. Okay. We do have the applicant on the line. Is that correct, Scott?
David, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Hello, planning commissioners. My name is David Nguyen. I'm the project manager for the Oceanside Vista project. I'm working on behalf of the owner. So I think Scott pretty much covered the main issues and idea that we want to discuss on this project. I just have a few items that I'd like to add to the, to Scott's presentation. If you could give me a second.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just a quick history of the project. And I tried to keep it short. I know it's been a long meeting for everyone. So the park was built, like Scott said, in the 1950. And then the new owner acquired in April 2015. They acquired both the land and all the trailers part. At the time of the acquisition, the park was in a very bad shape. Most of the trailer was very uncamped and unruly. There was 19 trailers at the time. Fifteen of them have tenants. But most of the tenant was frequently in default of rent for several months. And by December 2016, only 12 tenants left. And between the time that the owner purchased the property, 2015, to June 2017, most of the tenants start moving out and vacating the park. The last tenant moved out was June 2017, which is three and a half years ago. So in June, about 2017, after the last tenant moved out, the park was closed. And after it was closed, the park became a hotspot for the homeless and the people with the substance abuse problem. And then it's a lot of, I guess, gang-related activities, and it posed a lot of danger for the neighbors, and police were involved frequently. But after that, we decided to pull the demo permit to demolish and remove the, of the broken trailers, and then to create a vacant land to reduce the, I guess, the danger and the safety for the surrounding neighbors. And about two years after the park was closed, the owner decided to, you know, want to develop new condominiums. And I'm responsible for helping the owner from day one with all the paperwork project, process. So since July 2019, which is about a little more than a year ago, we've been working closely with several departments, including planning, building, public work, traffic, environmental, fire department, housing authority for Article 34, to prepare this application and staff report. Our project meets the existing code. We are not asking for any variance. I believe the project required 20 parking spaces, but we, we provide 40 spaces. And the access for the new residents will be coming from the alley so that it would not create additional impact on Tremont. We will be building, as part of the project, we will be building 20 beautiful and modern condominiums that will blend in quite nicely with the surrounding neighbors. And we also do the street improvement on both side, on the Tremont side, and also on the alley in the back. With the street improvement, we will be paving half of Tremont Street. We put in new curb and gutter, put in new sidewalk, new parkway. So it will create a curb appeal in place of the existing dirt sidewalk and vacant land. On top of that, the new street on Tremont will create additional street parking for the neighbors. The new owners of the condominiums will be accessing their homes through the alley. So it, so it kind of be helpful that it doesn't create additional traffic on Tremont, as I said earlier. So we believe that this project will, will help enhance the aesthetic look of the neighborhood and to help increase the home values of the surrounding neighbors. And most importantly, I think that it will address the safety concern from the neighbors because from what I heard, you know, people go there for drinking beer and sometimes do drugs and stuff. And with the additional 20 new condominiums, I believe it will help address the housing needs in the city of Oceanside. So I'm here to answer any question that you have. And I hope that we receive the support from the planning commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Commissioners, you heard Mr. Nguyen. Any questions for him? Commissioner Crayle or Goodkind, any questions for the applicant's rep?
Not at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Nope.
Thank you. City Planner or Scott, any speaker slips for the public?
Before we go to speakers, if I could just answer Commissioner Busk's question about the solar.
Yes.
So per the climate action plan, if you have a multifamily development, 25 units or more, you have to install the solar. So unfortunately, it only has to be solar-ready per the code. So they'll have to have the conduit in there. And so we'll at least have the solar ready. But one good thing is they will have to install at least three EV charger infrastructure devices within the garage. So we will have some renewable energy devices that will limit their GHD within this project. So that'll be implemented as a part of the building code requirements and the climate action plan.
Thank you.
And also, we'd like to add, Condition 76, after further reading it, we feel that we, we want to move forward with that revision. It does, it makes sense. So we propose that that condition with the red line text that I noted in the, in the presentation be still set in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Back to the public. Any speaker slips, interest in speaking to this item by the public?
Yes, we have one speaker, Linda Walshaw. Linda, are you there? I just hit, I think you're on mute there.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, ma'am, and give us your name for the record, please.
I'm Linda Walshaw. I am the chair of the Oceanside Mobile Home Advisory Committee. And we represent, we have representatives in every park in the city. I work with all of the local law firms who specialize in this area of law. My concern about this was raised, I happened to be with Marjorie Pierce the day that she happened to notice that the homes were gone from this park. And it's my understanding that there is a 12-month notice requirement, at which point the applicant should have applied to the city through Article 34 and complied with the, presenting a relocation plan of the residents. I know people keep referring to the fact that the park was vacant when this application was submitted, but it's my understanding that the permit to clean up the lot was issued after the fact to remove the debris that was remaining from the lot. And my question to everybody concerned is what happened to the tenants? I mean, people keep saying that they moved out, but because they, at one point, they were subject to our rent stabilization ordinance and to the state and city laws regarding conversion, I'm concerned that these people may not have been relocated. I'm not understanding why they would voluntarily leave their homes unless they were required to through some notice or some other action.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that it?
Yes, I suppose so. I mean, you can see for yourself the requirements of the ordinance itself, what should have happened, and it may no longer apply now that they're gone. But, but the question again, with, when we're talking about seniors and senior housing and affordable housing, what, we've lost, the last report that I saw from La Playa Vista and the annual report that are filed with the city was for 27, 2017 through November of that year. And it listed 21 spaces, not 19. And I'm, I'm just concerned as to where the people went and if, if the law was complied with.
Thank you. I think we can turn those into questions for staff. Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and ask a couple of questions from that, that I had. So is there an obligation by cities under the state law and perhaps the city's own ordinances that requires the city to track folks that were former residents of mobile home parks? To clarify where, you know, where did they land, where they, if they were displaced? Did they land somewhere? Do we keep a record of that? How does that work?
Thank you, Chair Rosales. The, no. I mean, the answer is there's not really a city law that requires us to track when, when mobile home residents leave voluntarily, you know, move, vacate a park voluntarily. Article 34 is, is designed to make sure that when the park owner who owns the land wants to convert the park to a different use, that anybody who's living in that park at the time the application is, is presented to the city to change the use of the park, that, that all, any residents who are living in the park receive notice of that, and they receive relocation benefits if they're eligible, or there's a number of things. But again, as in this instance, the 12-month notice period that Ms. Walshaw referred to refers to 12 months from the time that the application is filed. I mean, this applicant is complying with Article 34 right now. That's, that's what we're doing, is, is complying with Article 34. There's not a requirement that the, that the park owner give notice to the city, or if, if, if nothing that the park owner is doing is displacing those residents, then there's not a requirement to relocate them or provide relocation benefits. And in this case, they, the report, the closure impact report indicates that those residents left voluntarily. And the city doesn't have a process really for monitoring the veracity of how those, how those residents may have left. It may or may not have been in compliance with the mobile home residency law, which is a state law, but the city doesn't enforce the, the mobile home residency law. I hope that helps.
Okay. It does, follow a question if I understand the timing of things. So if the application was made, there's nobody in the park at this point. Does the park, so the park is vacant, but is an eyesore, a nuisance, attracts all sorts of folks. If I understand the timing of the question from the public earlier, is the owner obligated to preserve that park as is? Or can he proceed to the demolition phase? Because I think the caller earlier was surprised by they were gone at some point. Can they proceed with the demolition prior to getting to us this evening so that it's actually vacant as it is now? Or do they, do the mobile homes have to sit vacant until that 12-month period has passed, even though nobody's living there? Or is that a silly question? Is that even immaterial to what we're talking about here? I'm just, I was just struck by the fact that the caller was surprised that all of a sudden there was this vacant lot there, even though you've made it clear nobody was living there for a while. Is, is that even a point of answering my question? I'm just making an observation here.
It'll be good for next time.
Can I add on to Mr. Chair's question?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry to butt in. Is the current applicant the, was, was the current applicant the park owner?
I believe so. Is that, if, I think the, the current applicant bought the, oh, that's a good question. Somebody bought in 2015, but the applicant in our, in our agenda items here is different than what's in the resolution. So, yeah, maybe not. Go ahead, Scott.
I can refer that question to the applicant. David, can you help assist with that?
Mr. Nguyen, did you get the question? Is the applicant the same as the owner?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yes. The, the owner who purchased the property in 2015 is the park owner, is the applicant. Yes. And I also want to add a couple of things in response to the question, to the issue that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch any in the first time. that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it in the first time, the public person was bringing. I believe she mentioned Marjorie in housing authority. We, Margie approved the location, the relocation plan that we submitted. So Margie was fully aware of the relocation. She approved it, and I submit the approval from Margie to, Scott. Another thing I'd like to point out is that for trailer park and Article 34 and the state law, it's applicable to the trailers that owned by the tenants. In our case, the tenant are simply renters because we own the trailers. They just rent the space to stay at the trailer. So they are pretty much typical renters, and most of them move out after four, six months to a year, they did not pay rent. And over time, they're just moving, move out.
I think that helps somewhat with the discussion. Commissioner Goodkind, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything to the question I asked about the demolition portion?
No, I'm really confused at this point about these, these issues, but I'll just continue to listen.
Okay. Hang on a second. I asked a question, again, I'll defer if it's immaterial to, my question was about the demolition, the timing. If it's immaterial to what we're trying to figure out here tonight, I don't want to complicate anything. If it is a material item, then, and you have an answer to my question, please go ahead.
Yep. Chairperson Rosales, the applicant is correct. They did have to go through housing prior to getting a demolition plan for the actual structure. We were informed by code enforcement of all the violations. We asked the applicant to receive the approval through housing, which they did. And once they did that, we signed, and as well as the building department, signed off their use, their demolition permit. And so they went through the proper routes and, and then, but we informed them they still have to go through the use permit if they want to come in for any new development to change that use.
Sure.
Or otherwise going to sit vacant.
Sure.
So that's why we're here tonight.
I think that clarifies enough for me. Commissioner Busk, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have one little more clarification, which is, did you just say that that, that all of this legal acts at the California level only pertain to trailer parks, that the trailers are owned by the occupant and not the trailer parks where the occupant rents in the park?
Yes, Commissioner Busk, that's, the applicant brought up that point, and that's correct. That's what, these protections are particular to the residents who own the home that they're living in and, but rent the space and the land because they're in a particularly vulnerable position in that regard. Otherwise, they're, if, if they're just renting a mobile home that's owned by the landowner, by the park owner, then they're like any other renter.
Okay, thank you. That's, that clarifies that. Scott, let's go back to the solar roof. If you look on page nine, point 11, I finally found, I thought I was going crazy, I was making things up. In fact, I wasn't. So on Condition 11, it's page nine, line seven, from line 17 on, it says, "There are no infrastructure-related requirements such as installation of conduit or piping, inclusion of collateral load structures or pre-installed mounting hardware." So that's where I got that, they don't even have to put conduit through the roof to get ready for solar sometime in the future.
May I answer, may I answer that question?
Hang on, Mr. Nguyen, hang on. We're going to have staff answer this question.
Okay.
The climate action plan states it needs to be solar-ready, whether that be consistent with the energy code, then that'd be said. We can defer to the applicant and see what his response is.
Okay.
Mr. Nguyen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and sorry for the interruption. Yes, the, the short answer is, as part of the construction, we will run the conduit to the spot where the solar may or will be installed, because we don't want the homeowner to have to tear down the drywall to run it up there because it'd be very difficult. But that determination, how the conduit is done, is later in the development phase, which usually when building, review the plan in the construction document phase, that is when they add that, the detail on how, where the conduit, how it's run and where, and so forth, the load and all that. So, so yes, it will be there, we will put it in, but building department will spec it out for us, and we have to meet that code.
Great, thank you very much. That clears it right up. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, we're staying with commissioners and their questions at this point, either to the applicant or to staff. Any questions on the dais here? Seeing none, Commissioners Crayhill or Goodkind, any other clarifications needed or questions to staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So just to clarify, these homes were owned by the park owner and rented by tenants? Is that correct?
That, that's understanding. I'm getting a nodding of the heads, yes.
Can, can we get a confirmation, a verbal confirmation from the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Crayhill, I don't have a question, but I just, you know, wanted to at least kind of just mention really quickly that I do share the concern that the public mentioned about the precedents that could potentially be set of a landlord effectively trying to affect tenants by buying out the owner-occupied mobile homes in order to convert the park. You know, that, that is something that you could see somebody trying to do. But that, you know, this park has been vacant for a number of years, and in fact, there's been no owner-occupied spaces that were subject to the rent control ordinance in over a decade, as the city attorney's office mentioned. So I think that we're kind of in the, in the clear here from that danger of setting a precedence for other parks in our city from trying to kind of undermine our, our rules here. So I don't really find any reason to deny the permit on those grounds at this point.
Great, yeah, good comment, thank you. And I think it's been a helpful discussion to understand the nuances and differences between the types of mobile home parks and ownership rights and renter rights and so forth. It's, it's helped me, I knew a little bit about it, but this was very helpful. Thank you. Okay, we've had a presentation by staff and by the applicant. We've gotten some input from the public, and that was it, correct, staff? No more public input? Okay. So it'll come back to the commission at this point for a proposed motion, and we did have clarification from staff on, on Item 76 in the resolution. That'll be a cleanup item and some additional language. So if somebody would like to make a motion, now would be the time.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Custer, go ahead.
Confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per SEQA Guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332 in Development Projects, and approve tentative map T1900002 Development Plan D1900013, and regular coastal permit RC1900010, and recommend that the City Council approve the La Playa Trailer Park Closure Impact Report and Conditional Use Permit COP2000019 by Adopt and Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020P35, with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. And we should add something about 76 to clean up as proposed.
Yes, and that would include in your motion, Item 76, which staff just had up on the screen, but I think we've, we've got that covered. Is that, we're good with that? Okay. So we have a motion, a second?
I'll second that.
And I would like just to comment and thank, thank the applicant, thank the owner, thank the staff for working so long on this project to come up with something that really did a great job for this neighborhood and the way the landscaping and the front yard, the whole, the landscape and hardscape, all the stuff that they've done to this neighborhood is going to really improve it. We actually owned a building right across the street from this trailer park when we were there for, I don't know, maybe 10 years. And it was a, at that time, the park was pretty much older and it was starting to like, kind of, you know, get to that level. So this is really an improvement to the neighborhood. So thanks to staff and to the applicant and owner for, for doing this. I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you, and I would, I would echo those thanks to staff and the applicant for working very hard on getting what looks to be a very good project for that neighborhood. So we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Morrissey. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Goodkind?
I'm a yes on this project, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Crayhill?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes.
Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Yes, very nice project.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bauma?
Yes.
And myself, that I register a yes as well.
So Mr. Chairman, we'll record that as seven in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, and good luck with your project.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
All right, that'll conclude our public hearing items. We don't have anything under the appeal of city planners' determination. We do have a discussion item by staff this evening. Item seven is a regional housing needs assessment by city planner Jeff Hunt. Whenever you're ready, Jeff.
This involves Item seven in your packet, which is a summary of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, as it's commonly referred to. You folks have heard a lot about this, so I'll just briefly go over the memo, and then if there's questions, you can ask that. Back in March of 2018, the regional government, Sandag, did receive a draft determination on the RENA. This number was 171,000 units for the entire region. In past years, it was common for the Sandag and other regional boards to push back on these numbers because of the implications that they had for potential rezonings and other actions. The Sandag Board did discuss pushing back on that number, but eventually decided not to. And the discussions that I heard regarding not pushing back was based, the arguments in favor of not pushing back were generally because of the housing crisis that California's in right now. So subsequent to that, in July 2019, the board then accepted a methodology that the Sandag staff crafted to distribute those 171,000 units to the 18 cities in the county. And they published that methodology then for public review, and they adopted the methodology. That methodology determined that, pardon me, Oceanside's RENA share was 5,443 units, and those are broken out by income categories with approximately 40% of those being the lower income. And there's a table addressing those in the staff memo. The RENA methodology for distributing it to the cities in the county was based on transit stops in each city, number of jobs in each city, and then an equity factor that redistributed those numbers, not your total number, but redistributed your income-level numbers to better match the county-wide average. So for example, Oceanside has a higher average of lower-income units than the county average, so our number of lower-income units was reduced. The methodology that was adopted was appealed by four cities, and as a result, it was slightly reduced for Coronado and Imperial Beach, and the City of San Diego absorbed those decreases for those two cities. Oceanside's share remained at 5,443. So as part of our housing element update, we have to accommodate our RENA share, and we have to have this adopted by April 15, 2021, though there is a grace period. And we have to show that our housing element provides for adequate zoning capacity for all four housing income levels. Additionally, the housing element has to address other housing issues such as housing characteristics, constraints on the building of new housing, special needs such as the disabled, elderly, overcrowding, female-headed households, homeless persons. So there's a lot of focus on the RENA and that number, but that's not all that the housing element has to address. In order to show that we have the zoning capacity, we have to include an inventory of housing sites, and it's listed specifically by each APN, and then it gets assigned a density per site. As I've mentioned before with our general plan update, the general plan update is focusing on, focusing our growth in the three transportation corridors that go east-west. So that would be Mission Avenue, Oceanside Boulevard, and Vista Avenue. In addition, we have the Coast Highway, which has already been as part of the incentive district in the Coast Highway program. That already has some potential zoning capacity there as well. So that sustainable community, pardon me, corridor plan, again, is to focus growth in the corridors, build line of smart growth principles, having shorter distance to transit, shorter distances to businesses, having your citizens near the businesses so they support the businesses, reduce greenhouse gases, et cetera. So we're going to focus our housing sites inventory in those corridor, in those corridors as much as we can. If we can't get our 5,443 units in those corridors, then we'll start looking outside the corridor. There's a good chance we'll have to go outside the corridors for some of it. Because of legislative requirements, state requirements, state HCD, et cetera, I anticipate we'll have to do some rezonings in those areas as well. So again, the RENA is no longer just a numbers game where show your sites inventory that you have 5,443 and you're good. There's a lot of ramifications to the, to the RENA. Some examples are, you have to do rezonings of sites that are in your site inventory if they're not developed. So in a subsequent RENA, subsequent housing element update, we might have to rezone something if it's not developed. We have to show that there are no net loss of zoning capacity. So if a parcel is in our housing sites inventory, and as I mentioned, we assign a density and we say, well, we can, think we can get 30 units on that, and we approve it for 20, then we have to show that that net difference of 10, we still have capacity for that. So we'll have a little buffer in our housing element sites inventory, because we don't want every time a project comes in for us to have to figure out some rezoning. There's also triggers that if we don't meet our RENA, that we don't, if we don't actually have the constructed units built, pardon me, if we don't have the units that are in our sites inventory actually built, if we don't meet that goal, there's a trigger such as ministerial approval of some housing projects. They have to have very specific conditions and stipulations, but there is that provision under SB 35, if you all remember that. There's also a continued discussion that this focusing on the RENA and the ramifications and ramping up the ramifications of not building your units per your RENA is going to continue. There's concern that the state may start withholding transportation dollars to cities and counties that don't construct through their RENA. That's just discussion, but there's a lot of concern out there. So that's it. In a summary, the planning staff will seek public input on our draft housing element in the, in the near future, and then will come before this body to ask for your recommendation to the full city council. And without it, I'd be happy to entertain any question.
Yeah, I had a question or a comment, maybe. So you said it's not a numbers game, you've got your site inventory, and in subsequent, is it good enough for a city to show progress in subsequent RENA? So if we make the effort, Oceanside makes the effort, but falls a bit short, does that matter at all, or is that a consideration when RENA's tackled? does that matter at all, or is that a consideration when RENA's tackled again? Because this is updated on a periodic basis, if I remember right. Or is it, no, here's your numbers, because you said it's not a numbers game. Here's the numbers that we achieve, but it doesn't quite get us there. So does anybody care about the progress, or, you know? Or how does that play in, I guess, is my question.
For the trigger of ministerial approval of housing units, it's just a mathematical number. If you're not meeting your RENA goals, if you're not getting your housing constructed per your RENA targets, then that triggers that ministerial approval. There's no gray area. However, on subsequent RENA updates and updates to our housing element, I think state HCD looks at the progress that a city or county has made. And the further you've made that progress, the better light you have from there. If you've shown that, well, we haven't quite got our goal, but look at, we build a lot of housing, I think that looks favorably on the city, and you get less scrutiny from HCD.
Okay, then a follow-up question, maybe in the same vein. So if City of San Diego took up some of the, I'll call it slack, that the two cities, was it Coronado and Imperial Beach, so they couldn't meet, so the cities, San Diego stood in, is that something that can be, I'm trying to be creative here, is that something that could be done over and over? So is the ability within this entire construct, the ability for a San Diego or somebody else to take up the slack, that's my word I'm using tonight, where another city says, we just can't get there, you know, the trade-off, or some other means of getting there? Or is it, no, it's a hard and fast that Lemon Grove or Oceanside or whatever's gotta meet their numbers? And this was just a unique case where San Diego stepped in and took on some of that from those two cities?
During the crafting of the methodology, the Sandag staff was very good about going out to the different cities. And I'm on the planning advisory committee with the planning directors, city planners, whatever the title is. And there was a lot of discussion between the different cities. And I told you about the different methodologies. They talked about transit stops. They talked about jobs. There was a lot of discussion about changing those numbers and changing those criteria. And San Diego City at one point said, we can take a big number. So during that crafting of the methodology, there is the ability to shift around numbers. Once it's adopted, I believe that's our number.
Go ahead. Okay. Any other questions for Seacrim?
Just an observation. All of our rules are written around a 10% inclusionary housing when we build new things. And like we saw tonight, almost all of our developers pay into some fund, and eventually, hopefully, we'll get big enough that we'll be able to build some housing. But this RENA number says we really need 40%. How are you gonna, how are you gonna balance those two goals out? Because one says, we only need 10%, and the other says, no, you better get 40.
The 10%, well, first of all, let me say that the City Council has directed staff to reexamine the 10% fee to see if we could make it more attractive to build the units on-site, and so that I think that would actually help with our construction. So we'll take a look at that. The idea that we're gonna meet our 40% with just the inclusionary housing is probably not likely.
So some incentives are gonna have to be built in to the to the rules and regulations that you're developing now on the housing element?
Yes. What happens with the in-lu fee is it's collected by the City Housing Division, and then they leverage that, so they can go get grants from the state and the federal government to augment that in-lu fee. So that 10% doesn't cover the costs of lower income housing.
So it might be leveraged to 30%?
Yeah, it could be. The other thing that'll happen as part of the Sustainable Corridors Plan is, and I mentioned the rezonings, is where staff will likely propose some streamlining of the approval process within the corridor, so that there's less discretion, that there's more by right, there's more streamlined review, there's more tearing off of a programmatic EIR. There may be parking reductions. There may be density bonuses.
And probably more density than we currently allow.
I would imagine.
In order to incentivize more low-income housing in those areas.
Yes, and that's the trade-off. Again, we're trying to focus the growth in the corridors to protect the existing neighborhoods. The way you can really, in order to really do that, is we're gonna have to make some concessions and streamlining within the corridors. And the more units we can get in our corridors, the less we're gonna have to push out into our neighbors.
And the closer we can come to meeting this RENA number.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks.
Very good. Any other questions up here? No. Commissioner Crayhill, Commissioner Goodkind?
No, thank you. Good presentation. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, nothing on my part. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. That leaves us Item 8, which is a discussion, and you should have received in your package, a discussion and approval of the proposed 2021 Planning Commission calendar. Thank you for putting this together, staff. Do you need an actual approval from us, or what are you looking for on this item?
Absent any objections, and you pause one second and say, approved.
Anybody objects, speak up now, otherwise this is what we're gonna go with. And it is always subject to change, anyway. I know we've shifted a number of meetings around or canceled. So this is just the proposed, okay? Very good. Then we'll go to City Planner and Commissioner Reports. I'll start off with a brief comment that we, the ad hoc committee of the Planning Commission, specifically for the Brother Benno's Conditional Use Permit, met. That would be Commissioner Crayhill, myself, and Vice Chair Bauma met. Was that last week or the week before? I think it was last week. That would conclude the four meetings that we had anticipating that would have concluded, I think, earlier this year in like March, had COVID not come around. So we paused and had our fourth meeting last week. And staff will be bringing that item for discussion, deliberation for the entire Planning Commission. I think we were looking at the end of January for that to occur. I will say that it's been a very interesting dialogue and conversation and input from staff, from Brother Benno's, obviously, amongst the commissioners. Just an interesting process. Tough issue, tough issue related to homelessness and those that need services related to that, as well as other services. And again, just a very difficult subject that needs more than what we can offer in just offering potentially a conditional use permit for Brother Benno's to continue. It's a much broader issue, but that's what we're tackling at the end of January, so. Vice Chair Bauma, any reports?
I was asked to be part of a focus group for new beach resort hotels. I got to take a hard hat tour and tour the facilities, and then get to meet, and we met up with the management team and the PR group. And what they're doing is what I think is really the right thing to do, is they're actually looking to different people in the city to really help them understand what Oceanside's all about, and trying to embrace the Oceanside's authenticity. And like for me, I presented surfing and skateboarding in our agricultural area kind of to them, and connected them with a lot of the farmers, and connected them with like, the museum and what we're doing, and just the history of like, Phil Edwards and people like that for surfing who grew up in Oceanside. And so it was kind of an interesting, I thought it was just the right thing to do. They're not just coming into Oceanside and gonna put their hotel up and say, here's, here we are, and, you know, who cares about the rest of the neighbors? They're actually asking everybody, and not just myself, to, like, a lot of the restaurants, a lot of the people are being brought in to say, what do you think? What should we do? Like, what's the surfing, like, you know, they wanna make sure the surfing guys in the airport industrial park, which is like Surfers Alley right now, are really brought in to be able to be part of it. They have the OMA actually doing all of the art for every room in the hotel. So every one of the hotel rooms are being, you know, displayed, local artists' art. So it's like, they're doing things like that that no hotel has really, I've ever seen, ever done. They're doing, and that Jeremy Cohen, the guy that actually came to Oceanside, I don't know how many years ago, 12 years ago or more, when Jay McVeigh was here as our, you know, our Economic Development Department, she's the one that kind of embraced him and brought him in, and from that moment, to still he's with us. And now he's actually developing these hotels. I know a lot of people are saying, this is terrible, whatever, I go, but, you know, this guy did it the right way. Manchester came in and did it the wrong way. This guy did it the right way. So we're really thankful. I mean, I think it's really gonna be wonderful. So anyway, I was just glad that I got to be part of it, just a little bit.
Yeah, that does sound like a good process. At least it's a little more inclusionary.
It's very much, very much. I mean, they have, just everybody is just really like, all ears. Like, you know, the PR team came from LA, and it was just like, they were just overwhelmed. Like, Charlie Anderson and I were the ones that kind of did the surfing, skateboarding kind of like presentation. So we kind of like gave them all of that and what the history is for, because, you know, Oceanside does have a rich surfing and skateboarding history, so it's kind of cool. They wanna make sure all that's taken into account, and, you know.
That's great. Commissioner Crayhill?
I don't have anything to report.
Commissioner Busk?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Commissioner Goodkind?
No report, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
No report.
And Commissioner Custer?
No report.
Okay, that leaves us with the City Planner. How are we doing, Jeff, with our upcoming projects and/or meetings?
Thank you, Chairman. On December 7th, you have three items. Ivy Road subdivision, the Regal Theater out near South Moro Hills College Boulevard, they are asking for alcohol sales to bolster their theater. We're looking at it as a restaurant in order to them not to be classified as a bar, which has ramifications. There's also a Sunrise Assisted Living project. And then I'm working on a memo regarding the recent legislation that was adopted and signed by the Governor in Legislation 2020, so we'll try and get that to you as well. Your meeting after that, December 21, we're really trying hard to cancel it. It's so close to the holidays, so unless something's really dire, we'll cancel that. Council on November 4th, going backwards, the Matlack appeal was denied. The Planning Commission denial of the variance was upheld unanimously, 5-0, so. I will say, I try not to editorialize too much, but I will say that by granting variances on a case-by-case basis, it makes it very difficult for staff to administer an ordinance. The fairness issues come up, and people ask, well, so-and-so got it, and they point, and they, so. Enough said on that. November 18th, the Council approved the Rio Rockwell proposal. Again, that was unanimous. December 2nd, we have no planning items for council. December 9th is a swearing-in of new members only, so it's not like there's any items to discuss, planning or otherwise. And then December 16th, we don't have any planning items for council yet either, so that's all I had.
Okay, good meeting. I think that concludes everything we have on the agenda. So we are, according to the agenda item, we are adjourned until Monday, December 7th. Thank you, everybody.
Winding down.
Thanks, guys.
Good night, thanks.